So.
So, Theresa, come forward. Normally you sit down there, but.
Yeah.
No, this is a workshop. In other words, basically, we're focusing on are you ready to go to a public hearing? In other words, are you, all your i's crossed, all your t's crossed, is it clear what you're doing, yada, yada, yada.
That's right.
Urgent at the zoning board. Old hat with the historical.
Yeah. So that's the original. I'm gonna hang on to this. We've got a denial from Bill.
Can I just see the denial, just for a second?
Only? So that's with everything else, so just.
Okay, yeah, it's okay.
And there's copies of this. And. So, you have your own package of that.
I see, yeah, I have my own package. So here, let me take this back, now I understand.
You know what, it's actually.
Oh, is it in there?
No, no, it isn't. I'm sorry. It's not just different.
Oh, okay. So we have a denial, we have an application, we have two checks for the application. We have a site plan of sorts. We have drawings. And one thing is, we have to do notifications. Have you done, have you gone through this before?
Not for, not for this, but like, I had to notify, I think when they had to do the historical for something I was doing.
Yeah, so you have.
I've literally spoken to my neighbors, obviously.
Right, so you have listed on here, Greenberg and 11 Parrott Street. You're at five.
I'm at five.
Five is on the corner of Main and.
Yes, it used to be one, and then they made it five.
Yeah, so it's on the corner of, it's like, on the east side of Parrott?
It's on the west side.
The west side.
So it's kind of, when you go up the metal stairs.
Yeah.
I would be to the right, and then Timmy Sullivan is to the left.
Oh, you're that little cottage that are right?
No, it's actually, the cottage is part of the big house, it's part of Downey's old estate.
Right.
I'm next to that, the one right on the corner, has the red metal roof.
Okay.
Used to be free, freeborned.
But that's right on the corner.
It's right in the corner.
Yeah, it's right, okay.
So, so as we, you know, once, once we get into the decision of this, and the one thing we need to be clear on, you have two front yards, and you have to declare a rear and a sign.
Do I get to pick?
I think you do.
Okay.
I think, I think.
Yeah.
I think they do.
It's their choice.
It's their choice what's rear and what's rear.
Where, yeah, where in the setback is, will this fence fall? Because if you're.
No, it's not on the property line.
It's on the property line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, because, because if you're back, if you're back far enough.
If you're back sufficient setback, you don't.
We don't have, we don't have anything to say about.
I could never quite figure out exactly what that setback was.
Well, okay, so, so this is, this is the, this is the problem with this application.
This is, is not clear enough, because we have no idea what those measurements are.
Yeah, it's not to scale.
And because it's not to scale, and we don't know what it is, we can't.
And this is sort of important for this one, because. Um.
Because if it's, you know, if you, if you really don't encroach on any of the setbacks, this all goes, this all goes away.
No, I know, I know, but I want to do it right, so.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, but, 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 don't, you know, get this right, you know, in other words, find out exactly. Now, according to Bill's denial, he.
He didn't even make a distinction between within a setback or not, right?
What's the setback for a side yard?
It's 10 feet.
10 feet.
And then that's the shortest one, right? Well, if I picked it up, it's my backyard, but we're in my backyard.
I think it's 20 feet.
Backyard.
Yes, so I can, I can tell you it is under that, okay?
Okay, so, so basically.
You know, I, I literally have my measurements here, at least, not that this means anything to you, but it's four and a half.
Is it, is there a way to put this in, in the property such that it would be a weight?
Not really, because the house is, what happens is I have a huge front hill, okay, a ridiculous front hill.
That's the sloped area.
Right, that's the sloped area. So, to put them out there, I could, I could meet all the demands of getting them off, but I'd have to put them in there all day long, they'd be barking at people, and.
This is, this is, this is.
I'm stuck with the backyard.
This is not the time for that discussion.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, what, what we need, what we need for clarity, so we can have this discussion, this is strictly, are you ready? This is not ready for a public hearing.
Do I have to pay to have a survey done again, just to do, I mean, it's a dog pen, a temporary one, it's not even, I'm doing posts that are on little hooks that you bolt in and take off.
And if your neighbor wants to come back and sue you, because.
But I asked if I could get letters from them, can I do that?
That's not the point. When we make a decision, we base it on fact.
And precise measurements.
And precise measurements.
I mean, 'cause that's, that's, I just didn't put it on there precise. I mean, I could take, that is precise measurements, because it's, it's a survey, it was done by a surveyor, but the thing is, I didn't, when I drew mine in, because again, this is my first time going before this, I just drew it in on, this is basically where it's going. It's inside the property line, it's under 10 feet, it's not 10 feet back.
We don't, we don't know that.
Right, so if I, if I have that drawn in on that piece, 'cause that's all legal, that piece, it's only what I drew that isn't.
Yeah, but that's what we need to know, we need to know.
So I have that put in literally to scale.
Mm-hmm.
Like, exactly to scale, then that would be fine.
It has to be scaled, and it has to be measured.
Right, yeah.
And it, it, it would have to be done, you know, for your protection as well, because what we'll do is, we'll base any grant, potential grant or, you know, variance on your numbers, and if the structure is actually closer to the property line than the setback we've granted, if somebody comes out and measures.
Yeah, I mean.
You'd be at risk.
Yeah.
Right.
So, this, this is, it's much for your protection as anything.
Yeah, no, 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 I just meant, you know, 'cause I've never, I've never truthfully had to have a survey done of my property, because I was, I bought it from somebody that had it for 80 years or whatever, and then I bought it, so I have the original survey, which is different than, you know, it's my survey. This was, the neighbor had a survey done, and it included my property, so he gave me that to use.
And, and as far as we're concerned, this is not a survey.
So.
This is a copy of a survey that has not been certified. We would need, we would need copy, you have at least one copy.
Like, I mean, I have, you know, which, this was the one that was originally given to me. This is what I bought my house with, and they accept it as the survey.
Change that.
Yeah, look, Ellie, why did you suggest that?
I mean, not that it's your problem, but it's like, you know, you adopted a couple of dogs, and this is trying to do, I don't know what of their expense. I'm not doing wrought iron, because I just.
If you rearrange this.
So it's out, so it doesn't fall into the setback?
You're golden.
Yeah.
If you build, if you design it through the line.
See the way you've got it?
No, I know that, I know that.
If you square it this way.
But you have to understand from visual look of it, like, I'm trying to go for what would look right, like, you're looking at lines that go like this, there's nothing there. I mean, anybody would, nobody even knows that that isn't my backyard, so I'm going by a visual line, you know, attractively, like, I'm trying, I'm doing a wrought iron fence to be attractive.
You can do that, so you have a choice of going with your visual line. And going through ZDA.
Right.
Or making adjustment, and we don't have a say in it.
We don't have nothing to say. That's what I'm trying to tell you. But you said it's temporary.
I know, but it's wrought iron, and if the dogs live 10 years, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but wrought iron is not, wrought iron's not ugly.
No, I know that, that's what I mean, so to take wrought iron and put it in an angle this way.
No, but you've got it, you see the way you've got it now, you've got it in an angle now.
I don't, this, this is the road, when you're driving by, you don't see any of this, this is all grass here.
No, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying to you, is, let me have that paperback.
I mean, I'm lining it up with the shed.
No, that's what you don't want to do. If you do it like this. That way. Parallel it that way.
Make it closer to the, yeah, you could, anything gets far enough from the house.
Yeah, behind the house. This is like two feet, this is 10 feet. Rough, I'm just using that as a figure. If you make it the same depth all the way from here to here, you might not need anything, that's what I'm trying to get at.
No, I, I appreciate that, it's just that, you know, it's really trying to do with the nicest look for the house, and that, you know, I've got a wall right here, I've got whatever, I think to do that, I've got to bring it out towards the road.
But if you bring it within this, this footage, you don't need any variance, that's what we're trying to tell you.
If you, if you make it narrower than 12, maybe make it narrower than 12 feet, for example, you've got this.
10 feet.
12 feet here.
So if, if my, my front has to be what? If it's on the front, it has to be what?
It has to be 20 feet back.
20 feet to the front.
25?
25.
20 to the back and 10 to the side.
20 to the back and 10 to the side.
And you have two front yards.
Two front yards, so I'm not to pick, I'm gonna pick Parrott Street.
And you don't have to go through any of this process.
Yeah.
So, so I'm assuming that going to the south, that is your, would, would you pick that as a side yard? And you would pick that as a rear yard?
No, this is my, this is my front yard, which is, right?
Oh, sorry, 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 yes.
This is my past my front, anyway.
Yeah.
This is my front or this is my front, I would take this one, because that's my address.
And that would be your rear?
Right.
Okay.
So that would be my.
So, just so that we're all in the same.
I have no problem with the 20 off the back, I really think I could probably do 25 off the front.
You don't need that.
But.
It's the side, you gotta just stay within the.
You'd be surprised, like, you know, when you do the measurements, I was looking to put in a, a new shed, and I was measuring things off, and I was concerned, and didn't think the distance was enough, and I went out and measured it, and I had three more feet than I knew I needed.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could avoid all this stuff if you just find a way to measure it.
And I needed 20 feet off the back, and I thought, oh, my gosh, I thought I was within, like, 12 to 15, but when I actually went out and measured it, it was 23 feet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, optically, you may have more than you know.
Than you think.
But you, you do have to know what your property line is.
No, I know exactly what my property, I mean, I have markers, you know what I mean, and I rent, there's all string on my properties.
Measure off the markers, and if you can square it, instead of this way, do it this way, you might be.
Or create a, you know, just, whatever you build it, do it, make, design it so it stays outside of the setbacks, or within, you know.
I, I, that would be really the best way to go, otherwise, everybody's gonna have an opinion about how you're gonna build this.
And you can do what you want when you build it your own way.
Right.
And truthfully, the important thing is, is to get it up, because I've got a four-foot wall, and one just stands right there and leaps up, no running leap or anything, you know.
You just can jump over it.
Yeah, well, you know, fence issues have been an issue.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but as soon as.
As I said, I'm trying to make it as nice looking as possible, you know, I really, I don't even know why I don't want it on my property.
But, you know, if you do it, if you do it within setbacks, we don't get to define.
We get to say anything. No one in the village can say anything.
It's, it's your property.
And we have issues, and we do have, you know, there are significant problems in granting variances to go above four feet, that we face, you know, we were always constantly facing those.
I mean, it's sad, 'cause truthfully, like, I could do a four-foot, put some ridiculous bamboo hanger thing above it, or do whatever, and it's just hideous, you know?
No, the bamboo thing would be considered part of the fence.
It's a part of the, yeah.
Have you seen the bamboo?
Plants.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody told me there's like some bamboo thing or something that you can do, I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, but.
But it's, 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 we don't care what it.
Hideous, I don't want that.
We don't care what it is, but if it's, you know.
If it's outside, if it's, if it's within, you know, if it does encroach on the setbacks, you can do what you want.
But the other thing is, we'd probably, you know, if you were to go forward with it the way you want, we would, you know, probably need a pretty precise survey with things drawn to scale.
Yeah, no, you know, if, if you do go down.
Protect you and us.
I, I don't understand, is this, what is this?
Well, this was the survey that this gentleman, my neighbor lent me, or not lent me, but gave me to.
Well, if I, if you're gonna do it, I would suggest at least pay the money for a full page, so we're not, you know, so that.
Yeah, 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 I don't, yeah, exactly, I'm sorry, I didn't know what was required.
That's, that's part of the application, we need a survey. That and that together is not a survey. It's part, this is.
No, 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 it's just a, yeah.
Goldberg.
Yes, Mr. Rube.
Yeah, but, but I think the, you know, our advice is really try to find a way to build it in a way that you think.
So if I, if I just do it, and I come, if I come in those measurements, I can just call it a day and put my.
Exactly.
Call it a day. Get the dog's advice and see what they like, and then be done with it.
And then, and then the issue of four or five feet is no longer within our purview.
Right.
You could make it.
You could make it six feet.
Or seven.
Or. As, as high as you wanted to make.
Yeah, no, 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 five is.
No, 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 but that's.
Don't give people ideas.
I know, that's exactly.
It's got points on it, I mean, believe me, I don't think they're gonna be comfortable jumping up that.
No, one time, thirty-five. That'll cure them.
All right. That's the safest, that's the most.
It seems like a pain in the neck, but it's gonna save you a lot of grief aggravation.
And, you know, it saves you having to pay for a survey, too.
It's just the vision.
And.
It's much higher than.
You have, actually have more control over it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
You have more control over it.
And it's a wrought iron fence, too.
You don't give it the control of it.
If you were.
No, no, no.
If you put a stocky fence, something would see that, but you're doing it.
Yeah, I know, that's why the historical before this file.
Yeah, it's wrought iron, if people can see, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can paint it pink if you want to paint.
It just has to be four or five foot, I can't do it for you.
Yeah, well, then you, then you're better off bringing it outside, you know, don't encroach on the setbacks, you're, wherever you can, however you can lay this out, so it doesn't fit in there, and maybe you make it, you know, you don't have this little run, the, the angle, you build it more squarely, or something like that, you know. Get the same amount of square footage, but, but.
Square it off?
But square it off. And not, and doesn't go as close to your property line. That's what you need to do.
I just said I have to put it much closer, I think, to the street.
They're not gonna be out there all day.
No, why don't we not, you know, you just don't like dogs, give them something to work at.
Yeah, what about, what about, you know, just to the, off to the side of the shed in the back?
Back in here?
Yeah.
So they have to be able to get from the house out, that's the problem, you know, they go in, they're in the house, and they go out, you know, during the day.
On their own.
Yeah, they, on their own, exactly.
And they, they run into the pen and lock the door on themselves, huh?
Yeah. Are you telling me about the dog? Somebody could open it. Somebody was telling me about a dog that could open a gate.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You were telling me about it.
Yeah, but I have, one of the, one of the gentlemen in my veterans group has a service dog who opens up his refrigerator and gets him his bottle of beer, bottle of soda, whatever. No, I'm serious, this is the truth, that, that is a service dog, he will open the refrigerator, and he knows what he drinks if he gets it for him.
I had a friend once that had a roommate, and she thought her roommate was constantly eating all her food, you know, and not saying, like, she'd ask him, he'd say, "I didn't eat it, I didn't eat it," she'd, I walked in the house one day, and I saw she had a dish towel hanging on the handle of the. It was her dog's, and one broke it up, and the other would break it up.
That's wild.
And she's yelling at the roommate.
That's great.
With what you heard here.
Okay, well, you know what?
I don't think, I don't think you're ready for a public hearing, or do you even need a public hearing?
I don't think I do. I think I'm just gonna just call it a day and make it.
Find a way to fit it in, you know, outside of the.
I mean, you learned something new today anyway, you know, how to do it, and how to.
Well, like I said, I wanted to do it, I do want to do it right, you know, and.
And kudos, kudos to you for doing that.
I misunderstood the word variance, I thought variance was more like confession, 'cause I grew up here, so variance was always something that somebody knew they weren't supposed to do, they do it anyway, and then they ask for forgiveness, you know, so I didn't even know that. I thought you only asked for a variance after it was done.
That's forgiven, it's not a variance, that's.
But it's all been done.
We have solved.
Well, that's, I grew up here, that's the only way it was done.
You grew up in Tulsa, right?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
So, you know, it was the only.
Well, that's, that's a first.
No, no, it's four foot, but I lived on, on Horton Road.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I bought this, I came into the village when, well, actually.
You saw the line of the village.
You know, it's funny, you do, um, when I was a kid, I always wanted to be, 'cause all my friends from the village, but, uh, you know, having the outskirts, but it's nice, it really is.
Oh, yes.
It's nice living above the traffic, it is nice.
And, and just FYI, if you, you know, you don't need to come in front of us, check with the office, there, there will be some refunds. I don't know exactly what those refunds will be, but.
For the $500 bill.
Yeah, definitely the $500.
How much?
Well, they have to, they have to put an escrow of $500.
Wow.
They should sue me.
If, no, if we have, we have.
But, but, you know, lawyer fees, public, the public notice comes up.
I didn't realize it was that much.
I knew it.
Holy Christ.
But the new building spectrum will probably just come out, since it was already a denial writ, and just measured, making sure everything was outside of the.
Right, so, you know, somebody probably will follow through on it, but.
Great.
Thank you, Theresa, for your time and patience.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Great.
Supposedly, and I, I see CED, the other applicant, Kabor.
Oh my gosh, she even told me that she, um, an email, like, you saw it, for the state park meeting. She says she can't make the state park meeting she has tonight, here.
Okay, let's take a moment.
Is that not true?
That's true.
Okay, let's, let's take this moment, then, quickly look at minutes from 11-3.
My God.
I, I know.
11-3?
11-3, this is two people square.
Wow. Did all the same thing, or is it? That looks like 5-4, you know, 8-4, 8-4-16, is that?
Oh, well, there's that, too.
There's 10.
Give them.
There's two, there's two here.
There's, there's 8-4.
Okay.
So what are the 11?
11-3? 11-3.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, I take 11-3 back.
It's, it's six pages long.
Oh, six pages.
Or five.
You gave, here's 11-3, you gave me 10-16, is that one as well?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll look at it. Sorry, guys. Yeah, is that the one, yeah. Oh, we're absent, we can't even.
We don't, we were absent.
We can't, we can't pass on it anyway.
Well, read it. I don't know.
Find out what.
Oh, that's right.
Find out what you missed.
It was just, yeah, it was just us three, four.
It's already done.
So if you guys could do it, presume.
We proved it.
Thank you.
Yes, and like, one, something, or something, something bad. This is the one with the Arbor, right?
Yes, it's two people square, the one that's, like I said, it was like 32 variances.
Did you see the work that's going on right behind it, or? You remember the childcare or?
Oh, yes, Stone, Stone Street.
Did you see they, they tore off the entire town of the house?
Yeah, they're gonna go.
They went up, yes, gosh.
Yeah, I heard about that.
It's got great views looking out at.
It's a river.
What are you looking at?
Well, I.
Something over there?
They, they even said, the Kabor's.
Said, just said they were coming, right?
They were coming, yeah.
For what?
Workshop.
For where?
Uh, 15, 15 Fishkill Avenue, Houston and Catherine Adams, right next to the library.
Oh, that little old house there, that's a right house, right?
Yeah. Hey, Tom, uh, did you, did you take minutes for these, these guys' workshop?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, just when you have a chance.
Oh, boy.
Right, 'cause on, on workshops, if, if there's no decisions being made, it can be a pretty simple workshop, blah, 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 basically, it's just, I mean, it can be like four, five seconds, it doesn't have to be at all. And then tonight, I write up a decision, um, there's no need for you to.
Yeah, it's not.
Repeat my decision, because that's a public discussion. But, you know, generics of some of the discussions.
Oh, that's terrible.
So I don't, you know, each board kind of does it. You know, and all work.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, it doesn't say here.
So.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The wire.
Yeah, I remember, we did, we, we did do front yard variance. Yeah.
So you don't.
Oh, you don't have, like, just answer.
How much are you doing?
I couldn't.
Your right hand.
Your left hand. My right hand.
Your primary hand, yeah.
I could switch my beers from my.
With your right, with your right hand.
Yeah.
No, I think what we did was we simply can't, as you, the Arbor, not being. Oh, yeah, yeah, come on in.
Here.
Oh, you are here.
No, she's not.
You're not here?
I'm teasing.
Who's the niche? You didn't come?
No.
Well, that's all right.
We haven't seen him.
We're spending two minutes, we're spending two minutes on.
Minutes.
Minutes, and then we'll, we'll get right to you.
I'm gonna text him real quick, 'cause he's probably.
No, tell him to walk slow.
He got off the train at 8:35, so.
Huh, he may have stopped at Barbara and Brew. You know?
Or almost, that's almost good something or other.
Where's the barber shop in front?
Pretty good.
I cannot remember its name.
I don't, I mean, if you go to the Whips, maybe, no, the Whips, it doesn't have anything either, you gotta call an ass, I guess. Someone told me that they call this, starts 20 bucks.
I don't know, why would it be repeated?
Well, that's him.
He said.
Wait a minute.
What happened?
Yes, it is. But why would, why would you repeat current yard, current front yard, again, oh, because it was two front yards?
Oh, sorry.
Right? Two front yards?
Trains are often late this time.
Right, it's on the corner?
Usually it's off at 8:35, so.
These are minutes.
Like a clock.
Yeah.
Almost done.
Okay, that's all right.
You know, we always ask.
Normally, we do minutes at the end, but it was empty here anyway. And these minutes are like, literally six months old.
And when you pull one on the agenda, right, so no one was here.
Yeah, they were all, they were, got rid of them.
We had a public hearing.
We had a public hearing, and, you know, the second person left, and, you know, sent her on her way, and.
'Cause I think, I thought the email said half hour for each, so I was like.
Minutes, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, that would be another thing.
Right?
Well, the public hearing.
Public hearing was an hour.
An hour, and that's what I said, it would probably go to 8:30.
And it did, they ate 30, right?
Yeah, I'm excited.
And so we finished with Theresa a little earlier.
Okay, here we go.
So you approved the minutes?
Yes, well, let's do it now.
I need a motion from.
That we approved the minutes from 11-3-16.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
What was the date of those minutes?
Uh, these are 11-3-2016.
Sorry. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, if, we just kind of mumble or we'll pass something, Tom?
Yes, stop us.
Don't, don't be shabby, say.
Yeah, say it again.
Say it again.
Play it again, Sam.
All right. Ta-da.
Ta-da.
Ta-da. All right, so, this is a workshop for 15 Fishkill Avenue. This is a readiness hearing, in other words, you have all your ducks in a row, so that we can take it to a public hearing. Our previous, just FYI, our previous person was in a situation where she wasn't ready for a public hearing, so. But it may be to her favor as well, so there. Sorry, too many pieces of paper for putting around in there.
You were the only one not in the meeting.
I'm sorry, I was collecting cans with the scouts for the food bank.
But we did comment that you were the only.
It's Dr. Gregory's house, actually.
We were Jamaican?
Uh, yes, part of the same troop, but we had, we like, took different areas, so I took Fishkill Avenue, that's my new neighborhood.
We did comment that you were one of only three people to show up at the march meeting.
Oh, good.
I remember, I think it was you, me, Brian, Aaron, Aaron, you were there? Right, that's right.
And of course, the meeting I missed would be the meeting that was food at, I heard.
Oh, it was everything.
Oh.
Next time.
Was even a keg.
Oh, what?
I wasn't invited, it was cake.
Assessment. All right, so, we have an application, we have a denial. Without a denial, we can't go anywhere. So here's the denial. And it looks like you are. We have a nice survey, thank you. Then we have a site plan, yay, with measurements. Last person came in, just.
Yeah, we went through the whole historic board thing, so we had all our papers done for that.
Yeah.
Well, you bent it in already?
Yes, we got it approved.
You got punished, I mean.
The main, the main thing we're concerned with, I mean, it can be, you know, deep purple is, you know, hazely on the front, as far as we're concerned, is, you know, setbacks, footprint, height.
Lot of coverage.
Lot of coverage. And you have sixty-one by seventy-five, you have a sub, not standard, but a sub, a full lot is seventy-five by a hundred.
Right.
So your setbacks, just FYI, we will, we will base our setback variances on a calculation for a small lot. Standard, standard lot is ten feet, like side yard setbacks are ten feet. Small lots has to be a minimum of fifteen, or a minimum of seven and a half feet.
Combined.
Combined on two sides, so, just FYI, when we look at this, we're gonna look at it in terms of a small lot, not a full size.
I think, you also, you know, we, we learn things as we, we find out, so, the original papers we got, badly, that there was, the building was built in eighteen twenty-one. And so, I've been told it was almost pre-zoning, because if you look at the.
Oh yeah, it's.
North elevation.
It's pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
Non-conforming.
Right.
So, but anytime you start doing decisions and making changes, you lose some of that. Not, not all of it, but some. So, front yard. Rear yard, existence twenty-one, proposed is eleven. So, okay, so you need a rear yard variance, because you're supposed to have twenty, and you're gonna be at eleven point three five.
And then aside?
And aside, you have like next to nothing.
But they have a lot more on the other side.
Yeah.
Show me why the, why is the rear. So this is where the building fronts, or is it front here?
It fronts, it fronts.
Fishkill Avenue is the front.
Fishkill Avenue.
Fishkill Avenue is the front, it's over here, yeah.
It's one of the few, because I lived on Fishkill, so it's one of the few things I look at and go, oh yeah, I know this. Versus other houses, these guys go.
So this building is tough.
The house next to the Butterfield Library is behind us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. That, the hollowed down.
Yes.
Well, that's Eli's, that was Jimmy Eli's oldest house.
So, lot, lot of coverage is not an issue, stories, two and a half. So you're, you're raising the roof?
On the, on the extension, we have a basement and the roof, but it's, it's the same, same height, the existing house.
So it's a two, you're not, you're not, you're not raising the roof, the, the extension has a two-story, a roof of the second story.
Right.
Currently, what, what is in the back is just a, like a porch off the kitchen.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be enclosed.
Right.
And then we're building above the existing porch, to the second floor level, and that's gonna be a master bath and a closet.
Right, okay. Just on the, on the half-story, we're gonna ask this question, a half-story is half the square footage of the floor below it. In words, let's make simple math, it's two hundred square feet below it. Your half-story has to be a hundred, less than a hundred square feet that has a headroom of seven feet.
Right, but you're not, you're not, you're not building a second, a half-story, right?
You're not.
You're not building a half-story at all.
Well, then why is it going from two stories to two and a half?
No, it's not, it's not.
Uh.
That's the allowed.
Oh, allowed, uh, never mind, it's late, guys, sorry. Just ignore the guy in the middle. He doesn't know what he's talking about. Height twenty-five, twenty-five, yeah, so, never mind. Right. So basically, we're looking for.
A rear yard setback.
And a side yard setback.
And a side yard setback. And then, with the window seat, you're just gonna extend, extending the wall out, is that what you're doing here?
So what's happening is, you know, you, the reason is, we come up the stairs, and the roof is really low, so we're basically trying to find an architectural sort of creative way of just making a little bit of headroom and bringing in a little bit, bit of light out there, so we are, we're creating a small window seat up there.
Okay, so.
And you can actually see it better with elevation.
Yeah, so.
You can see it in this elevation here.
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't see this.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I see, it's there.
It's on the second story.
So that goes right to the lot line, that.
Yeah, I see, but it's on here, it's, it's marked in red, right?
Right.
And that's, that's what we need to consider.
Yes.
I don't see where it is.
It's an, what's the word for it, Oreo?
And so that's where it goes from side yard, one point eight four feet.
It's going there, it's gonna extend it, yeah.
Point nothing.
Right there, yeah.
Gotcha. Big change, see that house? Yeah.
Cause it's at all, it was a little, I mean, an elevator.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we do, I didn't want to.
Really good care of it.
Again, this is a readiness hearing, this is not.
Well, it'll help us understand, I mean, there are times we've done even, you know, site views of this, where the structures are so tight in certain lines.
Do you have pictures?
To find out what the bulk?
Do you have pictures?
We don't, we don't.
Yeah, we got pictures.
Yeah, I only had one copy, that's fine.
Well, we take our own copy.
Okay, we'll take, we'll just take a quick look in a.
And it was stapled together. Paper's getting so loose in here. You guys wanna come with me and sit for an hour to, to sort through applications? After, after it's done?
Nope.
And I can, I can walk up and explain just where the decision works with the site plan. We've been staring at these for so long.
So, man, you've got the. This, and, and what are you gonna do here, you've got?
So this is basically, so, what we're doing right here is, there's gonna be steps that go down into the basement, so this is gonna be just a one-story glass enclosure.
Oh, that's the, that's gonna be just one story, and this is the two-story.
This is the two-story.
Gotcha.
So this basically is purely designed because we have a basement. We're just, we're just sort of creating like a small landing in, and then the steps that go down.
The stairway to down.
That's right.
Okay.
That's what that back area.
That back area is.
It's just an access to the basement, so we can actually.
From outside, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that glass enclosed, or?
Yes, it's a, it's a glass, it's, what's the right word for it, a vestibule. And that, and that's, and you can see it in the elevation here, on the back here.
Right.
Is that, that enclo, that coverage part of your lot coverage?
Yes, that's, that's calculated.
That's part of, just wanna, anything this coverage gotta go into your lot?
Yeah, it's calculated.
So this is the west, this is the rear yard, right?
Including. Your window seat.
Yes, everything has been, because of, yeah.
Just.
Right.
You're working on for us, I.
Yes, yeah. What, what, sometimes people go, really?
Yes, no, I think, I think just working with an architect helped us just plan for all of those things, so.
Well, we've had architects. I mean, like, the set we had here for the, the hearing, which is, you know, on top of it, we've had others that.
The guesswork.
Yeah, we say, come.
That costs you money.
Right.
That costs nothing, it costs you money and time.
Right.
Cause they don't do it right, you gotta do it again and again, like, oh boy.
Okay, I wanna get back to the, the actual application. I lied. Okay, so, starting at twelve Morris, twelve Morris is, which, is the, the house that's next to the library?
Yeah, the green one.
Yeah, Butterfield Library, good, Allen's, yes.
Morris Street.
Morris, you should do, you should do eleven.
I have it, who's eleven? Where, where?
My old house, or twelve, twelve, next to Allen's.
Uh, on twelve Fishkill?
Yeah.
I have Joe and Roberta's.
That's it, yeah.
On Mo, on Morris.
Oh yeah, that's the. That's behind him.
Right next to Jerry, right next to Jerry, behind, behind the.
Twelve Fishkill.
The, the massive, yeah.
Yeah. They're weekenders, I don't know their names, do you know their names?
No.
So we need to notify them?
Yes. Yes. Better to over-notify than to not notify.
So I need to bring you that.
What we, what I'll do is, if, if we feel that you're ready for a public hearing for our next meeting, I will write a public notice. And we'll send that public notice, PCNR, into you. And then, you will send that in a return receipt.
Request.
Meaning that with historic board.
Right, okay, so, same thing, do the same thing.
Right.
And then bring the notices in, if somebody, if you.
The proof is mailing.
The proof is mailing, if somebody doesn't respond, that's not your problem, your, your, your. If you've contacted them, you've done your due diligence, if they don't get back to you, that's your problem.
Okay, so Butterfield Library, twelve Morris?
The same people that you sent the notice out for the other one?
Joe and Roberta is, I think, fourteen Morris.
You're saying twelve Fishkill too, you're saying?
And then twelve.
Twelve and fourteen Fishkill.
Yeah.
That could, okay.
Yeah. Cause we, well, maybe not through the bushes, but basically, if you sit on the front steps of twelve, you can see pretty much the whole, the whole run of your house.
Right.
And I only, I can only say that because I lived there for five years.
The way the house is, though, it's like you can see it right down the street, cause it's kind of, doesn't have anything around it.
I know, yeah.
Which is why we like to.
I have a funny story about your driveway, but I don't have to bore you with it.
She used to call, to school, my wife, every day.
Is that right?
There's kids parked in front of my house. My wife would say, well, you have to call the cop, well, I'm calling you because they're kids. My wife would say, it's a public street, we cannot control the kids or the people who drive to school where they park. But it was, I was an angolner.
Oh, within lines. Oh, okay.
I remember her coming out in a, in a shower cap.
Oh, my god, yes.
So when we went to the historic board, I said, I can do that if you want me to be historic.
Catherine, that, she worked for Harvey, she's probably forty years.
So that's close to the front yard setback.
That's a true word of a spinster.
Her niece was at the closing, and she was very emotional about moving the house. She's not, no, she's in a home.
Kind of Jersey.
No.
That's the only one.
Yeah.
Okay.
But her niece, Brad, was at the closing, and she said she basically grew up in that house, because it was so close to school.
Yeah.
And so after school, she would just head down to our house.
I had done a little work for her, and she had set the checkbook out, she had.
I don't know, I just.
Checked out, and she checked everything that I did not, she knew what the hell I was doing, but. And before she gave me the check, make sure.
Sorry, I, I don't see, oh, yeah, look at ten point five.
Okay, so that, that's not technically a portico, then.
What, what, you doing?
It's gonna seem funny to look at that app.
It's not, we're not changing that much. A little bit, just taking it more livable for a family.
I had, I sold my mother's house.
Four seventeen entries in porticoes.
Six years ago.
Okay, thank you.
And my grandfather built my house. And they invited me in to see the work, and they kept the kitchen the same, but they knocked the back door out.
But that is covered under the front yard door, so we're gonna get.
It's in any. It's too big to.
The bedroom was down in the basement.
So, again, front affected north side, rear yard, right the west and the south.
Beams, and they had track lighting.
And no height issue.
Bedroom upstairs, which was my mother's, her kids' playroom. And they put the sliding door. But to see the changes in the house, it's right across from the school.
I, I don't think there's anything else.
Okay, good. Um, I, I think, I think we're okay here, I think the drawings are clear, we know what, you know, we know where you're going with this. Just, you know, make that change, or add, add twelve Fishkill to that. Our next meeting is the fifteenth, and we can have, you know, I, I think, I think we're ready for a public hearing with you guys on the fifteenth.
If that works for you, yeah.
That'd be great.
And, which means I have to write this, this notice at the very, very latest, well, I have to have it into these guys by Monday morning, nine AM.
So we can then.
Do you send us a copy?
And I'll send, I'll CC you, cause I have your email.
Yes.
I don't think I have yours.
No, I forwarded to him.
Oh, okay. He's the one who didn't show.
You put your email on the application, though.
I do have my email on the application.
Okay. I didn't have it in, I didn't have it, we're not allowed to take these out of the office.
Oh, right.
The, the originals, so, when I was writing this thing up, I did, but I had yours because of company.
So how many days do we need to have those, that in before, because that was something we ran into with the store. If our meeting's on the fifteenth, they should receive the notices by?
If you, if you mail them, if we get, if Greg sends you this stuff on Monday, and you can get those things in the mail by Tuesday morning.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
You just have to give the weekenders.
Yeah.
Just that Greg has to.
Or the weekenders.
But again, we should just do it.
You, what you do is do it, right.
Do you know what I can do, is I can put it in the mail to the weekenders on Monday, but I can put a.
Do you know their name?
I don't know their name.
You can find out, cause we know pretty much everyone.
Their teachers?
Yes, their teacher.
So Veronica knows them, right, and you know.
I mean, cause they were, there was an owner between them and us.
With the goggers, who are friends of ours.
Yeah, so there was an owner between them and us.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be.
You know, they're probably gonna be up this weekend, just banging the door and saying.
Right, and just give them an informal notice, the formal notice that.
And, and, cause they're gonna get a notice if they.
They're gonna get a notice anyway.
They'll get the card from the, from the post office, but this is what it's about.
Right.
You know?
I mean, we've had cases where, you know, people have come in and said, hmm, you know, they had issues with the. We take neighbors' input very, very strong.
Right.
Not that I expect you to get it, but it's, it's important that, that that's covered off at the door and those surprises.
Right.
So I can go ahead and write that letter, or you?
I mean, the official letter that you're gonna send out is gonna come from me, cause it says notice for the.
Um, but fifteenth and one time?
Different agenda.
Yeah, I'm just trying to just. So we don't have her, so you guys are gonna be first, seven thirty? So you guys will be first, and then we have, then we'll have two workshops afterward. Sorry, okay, so I have the motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Well, I second it.
Next.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.